Okay, so, ladies and gentlemen, it is just a couple of minutes after 4:30, so we will call to order. If, we can just get everybody to sign in, so we can get started. And, Mr. Clerk, can I have a roll call or confirmation? Do we have a quorum?
We have a quorum.
Okay, so, we have nothing from our committee, the whole closed meeting. No approval of the added disclosures of pecuniary interest. Okay, no presentations, no delegations, no briefings, petitions, all that other good stuff, so we'll go right to miscellaneous business. So, for committee selection, you'll note that it's divided into three sections. So, what I'm just going to do, just at the beginning of each section, is just give one final opportunity for anyone to, to remove their name, or to add their name. Okay, so for the first section only, so these are dealing with the committees for which, at the moment, we have enough names for each position. Are there any last addition? Does anyone want to take their name off a list, or add to a list? Counselor Neal.
Thank you very much, and thanks for this opportunity. I'd like to withdraw my name from Admin Policies Committee. I have my name, I've put forward to two other umbrella committees, so...
Okay, thank you. Counselor Holland.
I'd like to withdraw my name from Police Services Board, and...
Okay, so, Counselor, we will get, we will get there, that's actually on the second list.
Oh, wait, one second, sorry.
So, just hold, no, that's okay, just hold that, we'll just do them just one section at a time, just so that we stay organized. Anybody else for admissions on changes, or on this first list? Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, if we could move the Administrative Policies Committee to the third list?
Done.
And then, what we will do then, is I'm just going to read through, then, the committees that are remaining on this first list, just to confirm those appointments. So first, I have Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee, Counselor Allen, Counselor Camden, Counselor Holland, Counselor Hutchison, Counselor McLaren, Counselor Osannick. Central Pittsburgh Drain Committee, Counselor Bohm. Municipal Heritage Committee, Counselor Shell and Counselor Stroud. Near Campus Neighborhoods Advisory Committee, Counselor Stroud. Pine Grove Cemetery Board, Counselor Allen. Rural Advisory Committee, Counselor Allen and Counselor Bohm. Appeals Committee, Counselor Hutchison and Counselor Shell. Cataract Way Region Conservation Authority, Counselor, that's for the Lemoine Point Advisory Committee, rather, Counselor Osannick, Counselor Turner. Downtown Kingston Business Improvement Area, Counselor Camden, Counselor Stroud, and the alternate is Counselor Hutchison. KF, Kingston Frontenac Public Library Board, Counselor Neal. Pittsburgh Community Benefit Fund, Counselor Allen and Counselor Bohm. Rural Urban Liaison Advisory Committee, that's myself, and then Counselor Allen and Counselor Bohm. Emergency Designate to the Mayor is Counselor George. Okay, so then, we move then to the second list of committees, and so these are the committees where we have more people that have put their name forward than there are positions available. So now I will ask for any changes at this point. So Counselor Holland, so we'll note then that you've withdrawn from Police Services Board, so that will, unless somebody else puts their name forward for that, that will confirm Counselor George for that. Counselor Osannick.
Your worship, I'll remove my name from EIT.
Okay, so Counselor Osannick is removed from EITP, so that leaves six names unless somebody else wants to make a change, that would then confirm EITP as well. Counselor Neal?
Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to put my name forward for the Police Services Board. Thank you.
Okay, so, so Counselor Neal is then on the list for Police Services Board. Any other changes at this point? Counselor Osannick.
If Counselor Bohm and Counselor Camden want Awards Committee, I can remove my name. You guys are okay, like, you'll do it? Okay, I'll remove my name.
Okay, so Counselor Osannick has removed her name from the Awards Committee, so that would confirm then Counselor Bohm and Counselor Camden for the Awards Committee. Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In recognition of a couple of requests from colleagues, I'd like to remove my name from KEDCO.
Okay. So Counselor Stroud has dropped her name from KEDCO. Counselor McLaren.
If I may, may I remove my name from the Arts Advisory Committee, please?
Okay, so the Arts, hold on, I need to find that one. Oh, yes, Arts Advisory, okay, so that would, that would confirm then Counselor Holland and Counselor Neal for the Arts Advisory Committee. Any other changes? Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, if I've read this correctly, then EITP is now confirmed with Counselor Allen, Counselor Hutchison, Counselor Neal, Counselor Shell, Counselor Stroud, and Counselor Turner. The Arts Advisory Committee is now confirmed with Counselor Holland and Counselor Neal. And the Awards Committee is now confirmed with Counselor Bohm and Counselor Camden. So for the remaining committees in this section, we will be doing a vote, and, Mr. Clerk or Mr. Deputy Clerk, I'm asking if you could just give us a run-through of how the vote is going to go.
Hello, so the, the run-through is that, for the Planning Committee, for example, you'll get six votes, maximum, and I'll be reading the names of the counselors that have put their name forward. When we read the name, click your hand up if you're voting for that person, and the mayor will count your vote, and then he'll announce how many votes for each counselor. The lowest counselors will drop off, and the six remaining will be the Planning Committee.
Okay, so the first vote is for Planning Committee, so, and just a note, that you can vote for yourself, so, just thought I would just throw that out there, that is allowed. So you have up to six votes, you don't have to use all six votes, but you cannot vote more than six times. Okay, so what I will do is I'll just call the names out one by one. Okay, so, so for Planning Committee, Counselor Bohm. Counselor Camden. Counselor George.
Eight, oh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Counselor McLaren. Counselor Neal. Counselor Osannick. Counselor Shell. And Counselor Turner.
So Counselor Turner is confirmed, Counselor Camden drops off, and then we'll do another vote for the remainder of the votes, of the remainder of the counselors.
Okay, so, we're going to do this, we'll do this again, and again, so now everyone votes five, sorry, five times, okay, so everyone has up to five votes. Okay, so I will go through the remaining names. Counselor Bohm. Counselor George. Counselor McLaren. Counselor Neal. Counselor Osannick. Counselor Shell. So Counselor Bohm drops off, and your Planning Committee is comprised of Counselor George, Counselor McLaren, Counselor Neal, Counselor Osannick, Counselor Shell, Counselor Turner. Okay, moving on then to the Housing and Homelessness Advisory Committee. There is space for two counselors, we have three names, so everybody has up to two votes. So I will call the names. Counselor Camden.
Sorry, can we...
So, do we need to do a revote on that?
Yes, so, so we are now looking at the Housing and Homeless Advisory Committee, okay?
So if we can just do a revote on that, so, again, everyone has up to two votes on this committee. Counselor Camden. Counselor, Counselor Neal. Okay, so Housing and Homeless Advisory Committee then is Counselor Neal and Counselor Shell. The Kingston Environmental Advisory Forum, there are four counselors, and there are five names, yeah, Counselor Osannick.
Your worship, I'll drop out of Keefe.
Okay, so Counselor Osannick has removed her name from Keefe, so I will confirm, then the members of Keefe are Counselor Allen, Counselor McLaren, Counselor Neal, and Counselor Stroud. Next, we move on to the Nominations Advisory Committee. Counselor Shell.
I will drop out of that one, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Shell has dropped out, so there are one, and Counselor Turner, so one, two, three, four, so that leaves seven names, so six spots and seven names, so we will do a vote. Everyone has up to six votes. Counselor Allen.
So Counselor Bohm drops off, and your Nominations Advisory Committee is comprised of Counselor Allen, Counselor George, Counselor Hutchison, Counselor McLaren, Counselor Neal, Counselor Stroud.
Okay, next we move to the Waterfront Master Plan Working Group. We have space for two counselors, and there are four names, so everyone has up to two votes. Counselor Hutchison, oh, I'm sorry, before we vote, Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to withdraw from this committee.
Okay, Counselor Stroud has withdrawn, so now we have three names for two spots, so everyone again has up to two votes. Counselor Hutchison.
So Counselor Shell drops off, and the representatives on the Waterfront Master Plan Working Group are Counselor Hutchison and Counselor Turner.
Okay, moving on to the Kingston Economic Development Corporation, so it's the mayor and three counselors, there are, so there are five, five names for three positions. Counselor Allen?
Thank you, your worship, I'll, I'll drop out of this one.
Okay, so Counselor Allen has withdrawn, so we now have four names for three positions. So everyone has up to, up to three votes. Counselor Camden.
So Counselor Camden drops off, your representatives on KEDCO are Counselor Hutchison, Counselor Hutchison, Counselor McLaren, and Counselor Turner.
Okay, moving on to the Kingston Municipal Nonprofit Housing Corporation, or Town Homes Kingston, there are room for two counselors, we have three names, so everyone has up to two votes.
So Counselor Neal drops off, and your representatives on Town Homes Kingston are Counselor Allen and Counselor Camden.
Okay, Kingston Police Services Board, there is space for one counselor, and we have two names, we have Counselor George and Counselor Neal, so everyone has up to one vote. Counselor George. Counselor Neal.
Four.
Counselor Neal drops off, and your representative on the Kingston Police Services Board is Counselor George.
Okay, and then we have the Sustainable Kingston Corporation, so I'll ax the word "plan" there. One counselor for Sustainable Kingston Corporation, there are two names, so everyone has up to one vote.
I'm sorry, I intended to withdraw my name from that.
Okay, so, Counselor Neal has withdrawn his name, so Counselor McLaren is the representative for Sustainable Kingston. Okay, so that moves then to the third list, so the first one is the Administrative Policies Committee. So, right now, so we have six positions, right now we have Counselor Allen, Counselor Bohm, Counselor Holland, Counselor Osannick, and Counselor Stroud. I'm looking for one more volunteer for the administrative, Counselor Camden, is there anybody else? Okay, so that will mean Administrative Policies is Counselor Allen, Counselor Bohm, Counselor Camden, Counselor Holland, Counselor Osannick, and Counselor Stroud. All right, so, so moving on then to the final list, first, Milton Cemetery Board, looking for one Counselor Representative, Counselor Osannick. Is there anybody else that is just dying to be on the Milton Cemetery Board? Okay, Counselor Osannick, that is all yours. The Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee, Counselor Holland, is there anybody else that wishes to put their name forward for that? Okay, so Counselor Holland is on the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee. The Museums and Collections Advisory Committee, it says up to two counselors, and it says, says one to be a member of the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee. Counselor Shell, you are not on the ARC Committee, so I'm looking for, I'm going to ask for one person from the ARC Committee to put their name forward. Counselor McLaren, is there anybody else that wishes to put their name forward? Okay, so the Museums and Collections Advisory Committee will be Counselor Shell and Counselor McLaren. All right, Court of Revision Drainage Act, we need three counselors, right now we have Counselor Bohm, Counselor Shell, thank you, Counselor Osannick. This committee does not meet very often, so, just thought I would throw that out there. Okay, so the three, the three counsel representatives are Counselor Bohm, Counselor Osannick, and Counselor Shell. The Court of Revision Municipal Act, we need three counselors, right now I have Counselor George, Counselor Allen, can I have another volunteer? This committee also does not meet very often. Counselor Stroud, is there anybody else that really wants to be on the Court of Revision Municipal Act? Seriously? Okay, so we're going to have to do a vote now. Oh, Counselor Stroud?
In deference to my colleague, I will withdraw.
Well done, Counselor Stroud, thank you very much. Okay, so the three, so the three counselors on our Court of Revision are Counselor Bo, Counselor George, and who's, who's the third? Oh, Counselor Allen, Counselor Allen, Counselor Bohm, and Counselor George, okay. Taxi Commission, we're looking for one counselor for the Taxi Commission. This is, this is those moments where I just kind of just stare and you try to avoid eye contact with me until, until somebody gives in. We do, we do need a representative for our Taxi Commission, and we can't, we can't go home until we have a representative for the Taxi Commission, so... Counselor Shell, thank you, thank you very much. We have a winner. Okay, so Counselor Shell is on for the Taxi Commission. The Cataract Way Region Conservation Authority, we're looking for four counselors, right now we have three, we have Counselor George, Counselor Osannick, and Counselor Turner. Counselor Neal, Counselor Allen, is there anybody else that wishes to put their name forward?
If Counselor Allen is really keen, I will withdraw my name.
Okay, so the Cataract Way Region Conservation Authority will be Counselor Allen, Counselor George, Counselor Osannick, and Counselor Turner. Kingston Access Services requires two counselors, right now we have Counselor Shell, can I have another volunteer? Counselor Neal, is there anybody else that wishes to put their name forward? Okay, so Kingston Access Services will be Counselor Neal and Counselor Shell. Kingston Frontenac Housing Corporation, looking for three counselors, right now we have Counselor Holland and Counselor Shell. Counselor Camden, is there anybody else that wishes to put their name forward? Okay, so, excuse me, so Kingston Frontenac Housing Corporation is Counselor Camden, Counselor Holland, and Counselor Shell. Kingston Frontenac Lennox Addington Public Health Board of Health, looking for three counselors, right now we have Counselor Allen and Counselor Stroud. Counselor McLaren has put his name forward, is there anybody else that wishes to put their name forward? Okay, so the Board of Health will be Counselor Allen, Counselor McLaren, and Counselor Stroud. Kingston Memorial Center Advisory Committee, looking for two counselors, currently we have Counselor Stroud. Okay, so I see Counselor Turner, Counselor Neal, and Counsel, okay, does everybody want to be on this, Counselor Stroud?
I'm willing to withdraw my name from this committee.
We're not looking for people to withdraw their name for this committee.
Didn't we not have two volunteers here?
Okay, okay, before, before I do that, Counselor Turner, did you want your name forward for the Memorial Center Advisory Committee?
If you want to stay on it, I will withdraw.
Okay, I think probably the best way to do this is anybody, I'm going to call for anybody that wants their name added, and then I'll ask for anyone who wants their name withdrawn, okay? So who would like their name added? Counselor Neal and Counselor Holland. Okay, who would like their name withdrawn? Counselor Stroud, well, that was easy, very good, thank you. So we have Counselor Holland and Counselor Neal for the Kingston Memorial Center Advisory Committee. Rito Corridor Landscape Strategy Steering Committee, we have one Counselor, Counselor Stroud, I'm looking for an alternate. Counselor Neal, is there anybody else that would like to be the alternate? Okay, so Counselor Stroud is the counselor, and Counselor Neal is the alternate, and then, Mr. Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, we, do we not already have an emergency designate, oh, we need an alternate for the emergency designate to the mayor?
That's right.
Okay, Counselor Turner, Counselor Neal, Counselor Holland would all like to be considered for the alternate, so we will do a vote, so I'm, so everyone has up to one vote. Counselor Bohm, you're interested in that as well?
Yes, this is the alternate.
This is the alternate to the emergency designate, so the emergency designate is Counselor George, this would be the alternate. So Counselor Bohm, you'd like to put your name forward for that?
I will withdraw my name, considering the number of people that put their hands up.
So right now we have Counselor Turner, Counselor Holland, and Counselor Bohm, so everyone has up to one vote. Okay, so, so, okay, so I'll just call the names, so Counselor Bohm. And Counselor Turner. I don't, I don't think that works, some, somebody must have voted more than once, because the total number of votes would have to add up to 13, at the most, so, this is great that everyone wants to, to be an emergency alternate, emergency designate, but you can only vote once, so we're just going to redo that, okay, so you only have up to one vote. Counselor Bohm. Okay, Counselor Holland. Counselor Turner.
So Counselor Turner drops off the list, and it's between Counselor Bohm and, I'm sorry, yeah, Counselor Bohm and Counselor Holland.
Okay, so everyone has up to one vote. Counselor Bohm.
The emergency designate to the mayor, the alternate, is Counselor Bohm.
Okay, and I've just been informed by the clerk, we do not need an alternate to the alternate, so we will just, that's a little bit of overkill on our part, so we will just move on, pass that one. Okay, so I'm going to ask for a, a motion from the floor to confirm all of those committee appointments. Moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Turner, that all of the committee appointments we've gone through have, to confirm them, are we okay, Mr. Clerk, I don't, you don't need me to read through those again?
No, we're fine with that, thank you.
So I'll call the questions, so everyone can please vote. Next, we have selection for Deputy Mayor, so, right now we have Counselor Bohm, Counselor George, Counselor Holland, Counselor Neal, and Counselor Stroud. Is there anybody else that wishes to put their name forward for Deputy Mayor? Okay, so we will do the drawing of the hat, so for January and February 2015...
Counselor Bohm.
For March and April 2015. Counselor Neal. For May and June 2015. Counselor Holland. For July and August 2015. Counselor Stroud. And for September and October 2015. Counselor George. All right, and just a... And just a, uh, just a note, that if you, we allow horse trading up before the next council meeting, is that correct? That is correct, so we'll confirm the Deputy Mayor rotation at the next council meeting, so between now and then, you have an opportunity to work with your counterparts and make any necessary changes. Thank you. Great. So if we can just have a motion then to confer, do we need a motion at this point then to confirm this? No. No, okay. All right. So we have no new motions, we have no notices of motion, we have no minutes, tabling of documents, communication, is there any other business? Okay, so we will, uh, adjourn and allow our Planning Committee to get ready for tonight, so, um, ask for bylaws.
It's moved by Councillor Osannick, seconded by Councillor Stroud, that bylaw one be given its first and second reading.
Please vote. And that carries.
It's moved by Councillor Holland, seconded by Councillor George, that bylaw one be given its third reading.
Please vote. And that carries. Motion to adjourn. Moved by Councillor Neal, seconded by Councillor Bohm? Uh, not till January. Soon to be Deputy Mayor Bohm. Please vote. Would everybody please revote, we're still missing one. Okay, please vote again. And that's carried, we're adjourned, thanks very much.